Hey, I'm Brother Steve from Hollywood, California. We are so excited. Woo, tonight's a great night. Tonight is gonna be a great night. We kicking things off tonight early. Tonight's gonna be a great night. I have the one and only missionary Carrie Barnes with me tonight. Now Carrie is one of we call the legendary trustee board members. She been on the trustee board literally over 10 years. It's almost three decades, you know, but that means she must be doing something right, alright? She's running for reelection for the National Trustee Board for the Church of God in Christ. So here's what we're gonna do. I need five people right now, five. You know I'm gonna give away some gifts. I need five people to share this video, okay? I need five people to share this video right now. I just need five people to share this video right now. If you wanna say hello to missionary Carrie Barnes, you can comment in the comment box. We'll open the box up early. I need five people to share this video. We're gonna have a conversation with Carrie Barnes, trustee board member of the Church of God in Christ. I'll be right back. Brother Steve here in Hollywood, California. Things are going on, everybody. Okay, I see Tina Franklin has shared my post. Thank you very much, Tina Franklin. People, if you shared the post, let me know that you shared this post. With the one and only Carrie Barnes tonight, National Board of Trustees for the Church of God in Christ. Let's bring in Carrie. If you wanna say hello to Carrie, let me see. If you wanna say hello to Carrie, okay, if you shared, send me a message that you shared this post and we're gonna be a blessing to you on tonight, okay? Coming up right now, the one and only Miss Carrie Barnes, missionary Carrie Barnes, National Board Trustee. Carrie Barnes, how you doing tonight?
I'm good tonight, Brother Steve. How are you?
I'm good. Let me first of all say thanks for coming on and how are things in Texas?
Things are great here in Texas. The weather's pretty today and I'm just excited about being here today.
Well, we are excited to have you on today. Carrie, let me just kick off right now. How long, I wanna just make sure I verify. How long you been a member of the National Board of Trustees?
I have been a member of the National Board of Trustees for 12 years now.
12 years, that's literally almost, almost, you're going on two and a half decades.
Yeah.
You know Carrie, you've done so many things and every time, you know, we see you at the convention or every time I see you Carrie at the convention, if you're not sitting on presenting, you walk around with 12, 15 folders and notebooks in your hand, papers and everything. You're just so busy, Carrie, all the time. Tell me, or do what?
Or working on the budget.
All the time. So you serve on the Budget Committee. What are some of the things that you do on the Budget Committee?
I am responsible on the Budget Committee for computerizing all of our budgetary forms, keeping them updated, distributing them through the Budget Chairman to our department leaders and then ultimately distributing them to our General Assembly delegates.
Wow, so literally all those forms and papers people are getting, that is generated by you. So that's a lot of numbers crunching.
There's a lot of numbers crunching. Well, the entire committee as well as the National Board of Trustees, we all crunch the numbers. We all go through and spend numerous hours and weeks and months crunching the numbers to come up with the final results, but when they are placed in the presentation form, that is my work, yes.
Carrie, let me ask you this, you know, question. A lot of people really don't know the magnitude of what you do, you know, outside of the trustee board. Let's talk about your company real quick. There, I know that you, that you work at, because we like work at, because you the owner of the company and all the people that work there, they work for you. Tell us about what you do locally there in Texas.
Sure. I own two financial services companies. One of my companies is Barnes at Barnes Financial Services where I concentrate on retirement planning, IRS representation, IRS preparation. And then I have another company called Carrie Barnes Tax and Notary that ultimately was started in a low-income neighborhood, providing just business services to low-income families who could not afford to go to an attorney or say a high-priced CPA firm or CPA that needed assistance. And so I opened that company, Carrie Barnes Tax and Notary, to serve the low-income families in the low-income areas here in Houston. And it has grown and grown and I've since moved it to maybe 15 minutes away so it'd be easier to come to. I converted my grandparents' house into a full office and is now serving just this whole Northwest community of Houston, providing tax preparation, tax representation and retirement planning in this whole Northwest side of Houston, Texas.
Let me ask you a question, Carrie. And you hit a spot that's a little sensitive right now with members of the Church of God in Christ. Let's talk about widows and spouses, okay? What's, what advice that you can give to pastors, maybe some seasoned pastors? And they're still living with their wives, but what advice could you give to some seasoned pastors, like right now? What they should do to prepare for, we're not saying prepare for transition, but we're saying prepare for their succession in the future?
Sure, sure. I do service numerous churches and pastors as they're trying to prepare for what, I assume you're talking about retirement. There are several vehicles out there for retirement, for retirement. Because of my license, I'm not gonna give retirement advice, but I'll give some nuggets that we can take away today. No matter where you are financially, there's a vehicle out there for you. Whether it is a mutual fund or a money market account or even an annuity, there is a vehicle out there for everyone. If, some annuities, you need $10,000 to start. Some annuities $2,500, some annuities $25,000. Some mutual funds, 500. I can meet you wherever you are.
Hold on one second. You're saying if a pastor, and I need y'all to, I need four people to share this right now, because this is gonna get real good. Four people, I see the people and the numbers are going higher. Let me say this, Carrie. If a pastor and his wife are in their season age or maybe live in their 60s, they can start a mutual fund with just $500?
Yes, there are some mutual funds out there that you can start with $500. As you may know or may not know, you cannot contribute to a traditional IRA after a certain age. And so at the age of 72 now, it went up from 70 and a half to 72. The IRS requires that you start taking what's called a required minimum distribution if you already have an IRA. So there are other vehicles that a pastor and his wife can contribute to that does not have that cap. And one is an annuity because you are funding it with after-tax dollars. Another vehicle is a Roth IRA because you're funding it with after-tax dollars. So you pay the taxes upfront and then the IRS is not out there trying to get their money from it.
So basically, it's best, as we say in, now we're gonna do it in church terms, it's best that a pastor and his wife sit down and start preparing a succession plan. That way, in the case of his demise, the pastor's wife is covered. Is that what we're saying?
That is correct. And one other thing is, I mentioned a money market account. That, that money market account is probably will give you the lowest interest out there, but at least it would give you more than a CD because most people think that CDs are the way to go. Especially when you're talking about the seasoned saints. And so money market is a little safer than the mutual fund, but it won't give you as much of a return as maybe a mutual fund or an annuity.
Let's, let's talk about what you do. And right now, I'm gonna open the floor. People are commenting right now. Sister Iva says she has shared this video. God bless Sister Iva. People are supporting. My colleague, missionary Carrie Barnes, hard worker, vote Carrie Barnes. The people are commenting. And as my good friend, Superintendent Melton Timmons, one of our other trustee board members, support missionary Carrie Barnes. Carrie, you work so hard in all that you do with the national church. What do you do locally? You are a missionary, but tell us the name of your church and what are some of the things that you do locally there in Houston?
Sure, sure. The name of my church is Williams Temple Church of God in Christ here in Houston, Texas. And I'm very instrumental on the Board of Trustees at my local church. I have served as the treasurer for my local church and so I kind of am the finance liaison on the board to help educate the board on the, from the financial standpoint as to the obligations and what the church faces as it, as it relates to a financial standpoint. I also serve on the food committee at my church. I love working in the kitchen and serving the saints there at my local church. And so I serve on the food committee and then I also serve on the evangelism, in the evangelism department at my local church. And so those are three areas in which I serve in my local church.
I know the national church had to cut the budget from 10 million down to 5 million. I know you were very active during those readings and things that was taking place at that particular time. What nugget can you give me to share with a pastor out there? What areas they can look at that they may wanna cut? I mean, I told my dad back in Cleveland something very simple and it worked. I said, Dad, when COVID first came out, why don't you just go through the whole church and unplug everything? Unplug the freezer, unplug the fidgeter, unplug the water, unplug, unplug the cupboard. Because all those things are drawing power and electricity. Keep on the basic necessities that you can do to keep the church up and going during the shutdown. Now they're able to make a lot of adjustments. They save tremendous on the electric bill. So what other areas of advice could you give similar to what you worked with the national church cutting from 10 million to 5 million? But what advice could you give a local pastor right now?
I, well, while every situation is different, I would, I would just say, look at your spending and cut back where you can cut back. Look at your budget. We're in the 21st century. Every church should be operated from a budget. We no longer can just spend, spend, spend. And so I'm, I, all I can say is, you know, turn the lights off when you're not there. You know, look, look at your salaries and I'm one that did not want to reduce salaries and all that, but salaries should not, should only be maybe about, no more than about 50% of your budget. No more than that if you can, can help it. Just look at your spending, where you can cut back. You know, look at various, your utilities. If you can get with a different utility companies where one will provide lower rates than another, compare and contrast, compare and contrast some of your, some of your utilities. Look at your water. There's different companies out there providing the same services. Just look at your budget, try to streamline your budget as best you can and we can make it through this pandemic. My businesses have not skipped a beat during this pandemic, pandemic. And then there's so many programs out there that are out there to help churches and small businesses and take advantage of those programs. The EDIL loan is there to help you with your utilities and church expenses. And so you wanna take advantage of the EDIL loan. It's easy, it's quick. The interest rate for churches is only 2.75% for a business, it's 3.75%. And they still have money available. So take advantage of some of the government, SBA programs that are out there for your church. And I believe that we can make it through these ending times of this great pandemic that has plagued our nation.
Wow, I know you're coming, because I've been watching you for the last couple of months, Carrie. I'm seeing stuff about you coming out. Things are happening. You're, it looks like your business has grown.
Yes, it has. It has grown. It has grown during this pandemic. I'm so grateful to God. I've been able to save more money than I've ever saved in my business ever. Have more money in the bank in my business ever because I've been cutting costs. I've been watching my spending and I'm getting clients in because some of the government sites, the VITA program that the IRS offers to low-income families, those families are now coming to me because the sites are closed. And so I'm taking advantage of this time to build new relationships and new business ventures with people here in Houston to be able to build my business even greater than it is currently.
Well, if there's a pastor out there watching our program right now, where, oh, Mother Humphrey, God bless. Mother Humphrey from Southern California.
Hi, Mother Humphrey.
Mother Humphrey, happy birthday to you from Brother Steve.
Happy birthday, Mother Humphrey.
Birthday was a couple, I think a couple of weeks ago and I missed, I reached out to Mother Humphrey, but good information, Sister Carrie. Before we go into our final question, I wanted to ask you about, about what are the things that you do? And where do you see the church going? Where do you see the Church of God in Christ going in the next couple of weeks, the next couple of months? But before that, what phone number can I give out that people can call your office on one of your offices to try to reach out to you if they need some help or some advice or they want to listen to some of your services?
Sure. My phone number is 713-694-8999. That is 713-694-8999. And of course, me and the heart I have, I will answer your questions free. I will answer your questions free for you, so please feel free to call me. And if I can just make this plug, Mother Lewis is having a business-a-thon next week. So take advantage. My business will be spotlighted.
Amen. Carrie Barnes, business will be spotlighted at the women's department, business-a-thon. Missionary Barnes, where do you see our church going? Do you see us making major adjustments regarding conventions, events or things in the future from the trustee board perspective?
Sure. I, I, I can only see our church going higher. I, we, just the board, and I see the board going higher. Conventions as it relates to what we've been able to learn during this pandemic is that we can take advantage of technology. And so as we bring in technology for our conventions, I can just see more people being blessed with every platform that the Church of God in Christ has to offer as well as the, the expertise that we have coming into the church, all these boards that can, we can only go higher.
You know, let me ask you this. Before we close out our broadcast, what other things that you bring to the table, to the trustee board? I know you've worked with the budget committee. What other things do you bring to the table to trustee board?
Sure. So I've had the opportunity to serve on the asset management committee. I've served on the insurance committee and the construction committees. On the insurance committee, I was able to implement a process using Excel to where our trustee board can compare insurance coverages at a glance. So we look at all our insurance coverages and make decisions from a spreadsheet. Instead of flipping through a lot of different policies, I've been able to summarize policies and put them in a spreadsheet. Another committee I serve on is the construction committee. As you know, in Memphis, we are renovating or trying to renovate the, the hardware store to suites and we wanna put some kind of grocery store there, maybe a bank there. And so I'm using my experience working in the refinery at ExxonMobil Corporation and all of my construction experience as a cost accountant and a financial analyst on projects in the refinery to bring that to the church so that I can compare costs as we purchase materials and supplies and look at contracts. I'm bringing that experience to the board on the construction committee.
Now, okay, I didn't wanna bring it up, but you didn't, you didn't, you didn't open it up. So and for those of you who are just joining us and watch us live on Carrie Barnes' personal Facebook page, we just put it out there even more. Carrie, now, now you brought this up. Tell us about, and let me say that if you're watching our broadcast right now, on, on behalf of Carrie Barnes, what we're gonna do, because Carrie is on our show tonight, we're gonna give away 50, 50 UV cellphone sanitizer kits. All you gotta do is go to the website, coachingfamilylife.com, click on that and get your UV cellphone sanitizer kit. And we're gonna also give away 25 $300 dining certificates. We give away 25 $300 dining certificates. So go there right now and make sure you claim to give at the coachingfamilylife.com. Carrie, what did you do at Exxon Corporation?
Oh, I've done a lot at Exxon.
And if you're watching right now, Carrie, if you're watching, people are commenting, if you wanna send Carrie a hello right now. Mother Humphrey, God bless you. Mother Humphrey, she's watching right now and Mother Humphrey are sharing and people are sharing on Carrie's page as well. Carrie, what did you do at Exxon Corporation?
At Exxon Corporation, I am a financial analyst. I work on various refinery projects, anywhere from 5 to 50 million dollars. I, I do all the accounting for the, the, these various projects and I've been doing that for a while. I actually built and worked on the project that built the entire Exxon complex out in the, in the woodlands here in Houston. Exxon has moved all, most of the operations here in Houston. And so I actually worked on the project to build that entire project. And so that's what I do for Exxon. Just, I'm a financial accountant, analyst for ExxonMobil Corporation.
Y'all go get gas. Think about Carrie. Carrie Barnes, you help Carrie do what you gotta do. Carrie said, Bishop Dwight, the chairman, Bishop Dwight Walls is watching. He's supporting you and we're gonna be talking to him at the top of the hour. It's gonna be a conversation with Bishop Walls tonight. We getting ready. I know he, I know he's laughing already, so we getting ready for Bishop Walls on there at the top of the hour. Carrie, now you said churches out there need help and you do not mind giving a free consultation to help churches, show them how they can cut their budget, tighten their budget up, some of the, some of the things that you do with the national church. Explain to us once again, you know, what do you think that, I mean, tell about those programs. You said the EDIL loan and SBAs, but then, so basically Carrie, there's millions of dollars available to help pastors and churches right now?
Yes, so that, right now, they have implemented the payroll protection loan again for churches and small business and funded, funding that program with billions of dollars. So take advantage of these programs. The PPP loan is back. Take advantage of that. The EDIL loan, which is a supplement to the PPP loan that is available, again, churches, 2.75% interest. 2.7, that's almost nothing. The, I, I got a loan for a church, they got a thing, 25,000. Their note is only $60 a month. I got a loan.
Hold on, okay, hold on, okay. You got, you helped the church get a loan for 25,000 and their note is 60, Carrie.
$60 a month for the next 30 years and they don't have to start paying it until next year. Take advantage a year from now. You have 12 months to recover before you start paying the $60 per month. Take advantage of these government programs. They are available for us. They are available for us.
But Carrie, what do you think is the, what do you think is the hesitation that a lot of these pastors don't take advantage of this money that's out there?
The hesitation is because it's a loan and it's not free money. And like I tell my people that I'm helping, it doesn't matter if it's a loan or not. They're probably going to forgive that loan. So just, just take it.
I'm leaving the studio, Carrie, right now.
Take it, use it to fix up your churches, pay your utilities, implement things you've been wanting to do over the years and couldn't do it because you didn't have the money. This is our time. This is our, this is our time. Take advantage of it. The money is there for you. The money is there for you.
If you can't find that money, call Carrie 713-694-8999. That's 713-694-8999. Carrie, in our closing moments, what words do you wanna say right now? I see I have 10 UV sanitizers left and about six $300 dining certificates left. You better go get them because at the top of the hour, we're gonna have Bishop Walls on our broadcast and we wanna make sure we have enough.
Hi, Bishop Walls.
Bishop Walls.
Hello, Bishop Walls.
You out there watching our broadcast. Carrie, what closing words do you wanna say to our delegates out there watching? I'm gonna give you the platform and you can speak directly to our delegates out there watching our broadcast right now.
Sure. I'd just like to say that I wanna thank our delegates for voting for me for the past three terms and I'm soliciting your prayers, your support and your vote. I bring a wealth of budgeting and financial expertise to this board and this great church. So don't put a period where a comma belongs because there's still more work to be done. Thank you again for your prayers, your support and your vote. May God bless you, keep you and may God continue to bless our great church, the Church of God in Christ.
Before we leave, we wanna give respect to our presiding bishop, Bishop Charles Blake. I know you have had a joy working with Bishop Blake.
Yes, I wanna, I want to give honor to our presiding bishop, Bishop Charles Edward Blake and Lady May Blake. And I want to give honor to our general supervisor, Mother Barbara McCool Lewis and her entire staff. And let me go back, Bishop Blake and the entire general board, I give you honor on tonight. Thank you again, Brother Steve, for this opportunity.
Amen. Vote missionary Carrie Barnes. Amen. Vote missionary Carrie Barnes, reelect her back on the National Board of Trustees. It's 36 minutes past the hour and on the top of the hour, we're gonna have a conversation with the chairman. I know Carrie may be watching as well.
Yes, I will be.
Board members, we're gonna have a, well, let me say this, he's already laughing. We're gonna try to have a conversation with the chairman on tonight. Carrie Barnes, thanks so very much. Stay with us, Carrie. We'll see you in just a few minutes and we'll give you more detailed information. Call Carrie up if you need help and support. Carrie, thanks so much. I appreciate you now.
Thank you.
God bless.